Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for all those in our own services, both past and present.
Okay. Roll call. Mayor Bianzi, trustee Vissinette, trustee Morrow.
Here.
Trustee Capiello.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sturrock.
Here.
Okay. I've given everyone the minutes. All right. You're gonna adopt those in April unless there's some changes. Let me know before. Then we have Woodhull up.
Okay. First discussion is on the status of the root from Nathaniel Woodhull home. I went out and I visited the home. I think we discussed this last week.
Quickly, yeah.
Went out there, looked at the wood. We decided that the wood would fit into a 20-foot storage unit and it would be more advantageous for the village just to send a storage unit to the site because they wanted to start tearing down the home this week. So they wanted the unit sent there and then we could decide where we wanted to store it. Originally, the thought was that Southampton would look for volunteers to store it, but because it's historic in nature, we really don't want it just sitting somewhere else and it would be better if we just got the setup and as they took it out, they could store all the wood in it and then have it delivered where we wanted to. We've had a couple of people already say that they would be willing to store it on their property free for us or we could pick a place at Village Hall.
Make sure it's dry.
Tim, did we get back to the contractor on that?
Yeah. They set up all the delivery and everything.
Okay. So everything's all set? That's all taken care of? Did they deliver that out there today?
I think he wanted it to come tomorrow if they got it set up tomorrow.
Okay.
Is there any problems with our insurance putting that off site?
Well, it's...
Can we put it on site?
I think we can put it right on site next to the other two, can't we?
Yeah. Oh, I see.
There was a lot of mantles. There was a tremendous amount of doors. The doors themselves, he said, was, you know, the value of them weren't so much, but the hardware is all from the late 1700s and all in beautiful condition. The mantles were in beautiful condition. Rooms full of hand-hued paneling, half-wall paneling with chair rails around it. And I think we were gonna come out with somewheres around 400 to 500 square foot of flooring, which were all between six and eight-quarter thick. Wow. By 12-inch-thick flooring.
And it's all donated?
Yes.
Fair.
Just so you know, we got the $11,000 grant from Suffolk County for your tourism and historical. So maybe you can use some of that money for some...
Okay, we could do that, yeah. That would work very well.
We'll look into if that's possible.
Well, I don't think there would be anything more historical than that.
I agree.
This is another one that's coming up?
Well, you had gotten the 10 last year.
Yeah, right.
And they automatically approved you for an 11 this year.
Oh, okay. Fantastic. Did we...we didn't spend that all last year, actually?
No, we did not.
Okay.
So we really want to...but it's gone now. Use it or lose it. So you can't count on what you didn't spend last year. You've got $11,000 this year.
Okay.
And you have until December 31st.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, hopefully we can move ahead with this. I think one of the first things we ought to do is clear the property on Neighborhood Road because that's...the timeline on that is probably becoming very close as far as Suffolk County wanting us to use that property. Yep. So we should put that...I think we could probably, rather than hire outside help, we could probably do most of it in-house. We probably should start thinking about doing that. At least if we get that cleared, then we can start laying out plans. I know we have a lot of volunteer help, willing contractors willing to actually help us in the construction of it.
Do we have any prints of the old house?
Yeah.
Because you want to build the old house. Build something to scale.
Yeah, similar to that, right. There are actually no original prints of the original house. We have the one that was built after the fire, which was the second house, which is where this one came. Data on the Suffolk County properties?
We're taking lots of pictures. I mean, now, we've taken pictures of properties that have structures on them and stuff. That's all done. Now, we're down mainly in the wetlands where we got the properties down there and trying to put them together. Allen's been working with Doris and, you know, so hopefully all this will be right on the website, you know, be able to come right up when we're looking at these parcels. And so it's moving along. It's gonna be a little tedious, but it's moving along.
But the houses that are on the properties that are Campion...
Are devastating.
Terrible.
Really?
Yeah, really. And they...we have to deal...now, they have turned property over to us before for affordable housing. Some of these are in the wetlands, so you can't build, but they should come down. We have to figure out if they're gonna take them down or if we're gonna take them down and take ownership of the property or what combination of the two. I don't know.
On the two properties that the board asked the village administrator to file the original Chapter 180, to begin the Chapter 180 proceeding that the county owned, we sent a formal demand letter to the county. We have an official who's had...we got his name attached to the letter and the office of real property and demanded that they take it down and take responsibility for these properties. We haven't had a response yet, but the letter is out there, so the mayor has a copy of it. I'm sure he'll circulate it.
Okay.
Worst comes to worst, I think we should look into media coverage.
Yep. Bad neighbors.
Yes. Absolutely.
Well, they're not paying tax.
Yep.
And they're diminishing the value of the homes around them, so...
One of the things I was...is we were taking pictures of the wetland, which would really disrepair, you know, for lack of a better word. One, I'd like to find some wetland that they may own, say in the Hamptons or other places that might be better maintained. And if we can find it, maybe show comparisons of what we have.
Good idea.
Well, they also continue to try to buy up property in the village.
And they're irresponsible with their existing properties.
Exactly.
Yep. An update on the street signage. The guys today started installing the names on the vinyl sleeves. They got quite an education about it's not an easy project. It's a long, tedious project, but they're getting pretty good at it. I showed them how to lay them out and do them. Right now, there's no place to work inside, so I let them use the camera shop today and they worked inside and worked out very well. They got a whole pile of streets done. I think they have quite a few posts in, so now all they have to do is slide these sleeves right over the floor. Stan, how many posts do we have in the streets ready for...
How many what?
How many posts do we have down in the streets ready for sleeves? I know I drove over here.
Four, four.
Over the floor, okay. And how many did we get on that first run of...
From a side company?
Yeah, I know we had, what, 13 there this morning?
Yeah, that's what we got.
Okay. Have you reordered?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. And when do they expect those to be coming in?
Probably within two weeks.
Saturday, I was talking to Adrienne Esposito and she would like to...for us to identify an area in the village where we could use a nitrogen wall, which is burying a wall underground, which apparently absorbs nitrogen, does not allow it to go into the aquifer at all, doesn't allow it to go into the bay at all. And she already has a $200,000 grant to do this. So we need to look at our most highly...high-density area so that we can make the best use of this. And when Peter Lombardi was in the office discussing the sewage treatment, he was very familiar with this. So I think in conjunction with looking at the aerial maps and then bringing him back for some more discussions, we should move ahead on this because the grant is already there. It's ready. You know, you're familiar with Adrienne, aren't you?
Yeah, sure. You know, the next step is we want you to identify geographically where you want to put this. Village property preferable because then you don't have to worry about easements and if you go on private property owner, you have to get their consent and an easement and all those kind of things. But if it's village property, it'd be easier to do, much easier from a legal standpoint. I went through to an agreement with Citizens Campaign to install it or we're gonna install it, figure out, you know, whatever the agreement's gonna be between the two of us and do it.
Yeah, look at...just taking a quick look at it and taking into consideration what exactly you're saying. Because of the property easements, I looked at some of the areas where the road, if we could put it right along the roadbed. Right. Closest...close to the water, we wouldn't have to touch any private property whatsoever and it would just create a blockage. From what they're looking at and talking to the Lombardi group there, they thought about 1,000 foot could be done for that one. So I don't know. We might even be able to use in-house equipment. We just got a new backhoe last week, just in time.
Why is this...
I'm not sure the exact layout Adrienne's gonna give you.
Move the trencher and cut right in there.
Right.
Put it in and recover it.
Yep.
Do you do 1,000 feet or do you do...break it up into sections?
I believe you want to keep it in one long section to stop the...but if using in-house equipment and labor could save us probably half the cost, we could probably do 2,000.
Right. That'd be the waterside of the most area with the most cesspools.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's an immediate stop of nitrogen.
Yeah.
You know, because the nitrogen travels at about a foot a year from the septic, so this would stop it right at the road edge.
Huh.
Because any other systems, even if you changed all of the sewage systems in the houses, if they're 500 feet away, I mean, it takes a long time for that to get down.
We'll make sure the Citizens Campaign gets whatever necessary DC permits for that.
Yes.
Is there any maintenance or is it...once it's in, it's in?
Once it's in, it's in.
Oh, that's amazing. Okay.
I would actually like to see about ringing the whole village.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, we really need to look at this. It's an instantaneous stop. That might be fantastic.
And this has been tested or this is a testing thing?
Yeah.
They already know it did work?
Mm-hmm. Discussion regarding the Forest Road home closure in Lindbrook. Was there another on Lindbrook or just that one?
No, there was one standing there.
Oh.
You closed it? Nice.
Do you want to discuss the Forest one or...
Well, Forest one's still on the litigation.
This is the same one.
I think everybody here is pretty much familiar with Forest Road and what happened there.
Yeah.
So that went pretty well.
Yep.
Neighbors were all happy?
As well as could be expected.
Actually, they're dancing in the streets.
Now, we don't have a homeowner on that, do we? We haven't been...
Yeah, we do have a property owner.
You do?
Who's the pro...well, the property owner's been serving the violations or in the process of serving the violations?
In the process of serving.
Right. But there was a name attached to that property. There was a property owner, yeah.
Okay.
There was actually, I think, some confusion in the names because of the TV coverage. They were getting different names and I don't know what that was all about, but it was interesting how they were coming up with different names on their property and where they were looking or, you know, or whether they were just fishing. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
One or the other.
Well, we'll see who was collecting the rent.
Yeah. The other home up on Lindbrook that actually happened the same day that we had the media coverage was an interesting setup and something that I think that really needs to be looked at is the fact that had a family who just up and left. And this family, I believe, was on Section 8.
Oh, DSS.
It was DSS? Oh, I thought he said Section 8. And the landlord actually called us to go into the house. I mean, the interior of the house was a mess. It was typical of what happens with Section 8 where it's a good program, it's meant to help people out, but yet the program starts off with a single mother...a single parent who has a couple of children and needs some help. And it appears that once they get into the house, next thing you know, Uncle Harry moves in and Sister Eleanor moves in and they've got three kids and he's got two extra kids and the next thing you know, there's 15 people in the house, which at this house that...what would that house be certified for? Four people?
I think it was certified for three people. The two beds and three closets, right?
Certified for three people and 15 people. There were beds in the basement, there were beds in the dining room, there were beds...
Nonhabitable spaces.
Yeah, it's just everywhere. And what really upset me was the fact that they had a crib in the middle of the living room and you walked over to the crib and the smell of urine was so bad that you couldn't stand it. It was just horrible. And to think that they had a baby in that crib and when they left, they left, I don't know, I counted six or eight cases of baby food, brand-new baby food, in the closet, in the pantry. And that upset me because here, you've got all these...this brand-new baby food sitting there and now it's all gonna be thrown away. So the whole system is just screwed up and it's mostly screwed up because there's no inspections. There's no regular inspections and as we saw both on Lindbrook and on Forest Road, without inspections, things just go wild and we don't know what's happening in any of these houses. Certainly, they didn't have the proper fire set up and when you have all these people living in there, heaven forbid you have a fire.
Right. It endangers the occupants and the firefighters.
Oh, absolutely.
To convert nonhabitable space to habitable space.
It really is a mess.
Firefighters don't even know to look for somebody.
Right.
In a closet or whatever.
Yeah, because in the other house, you had to go walk through one room to get to another room, to get through another room. You wouldn't know where you were going in the middle of the night. And then Tim walked in run room and he got about two and a half feet shorter instantaneously, right through the floor.
He's done that a few times.
Yeah, he seems to have a habit for doing that. We really need to do...find a way of somehow coming around with inspections. There has to be a way to be able to inspect these houses, whether it's the DSS system, the Section 8 system, something's gotta be changed to allow for inspections in these homes, for both the safety of the tenants, the neighborhood, everything going on.
Well, that was our reason for moving our inspections to a yearly inspection.
Right.
Rather than the five years.
Absolutely.
Well, I think the most problem is the PSS one. CDC and Brookhaven, they require CR yearly to make. DSS, which is a county-run program, they don't care if they...they don't care if they come here or not, which is...I'm totally disagreeing because you put someone in a private house.
Right.
Why did that woman at that meeting, I hear what you're saying, but you were at the same meeting, the vice president of...
CDC.
DC turn around and say that, oh, we have these inspections, right? That we demand that they have the permits and stuff like that.
Well, they're coming around now. They are starting to ask for...Brookhaven asks for the...the only ones that don't ask for it is DSS.
Yeah, and she doesn't run that program, though.
She's not. That's run by the county.
Now, that one...oh, okay, you said that on Lindbrook, that was DSS. I said, I thought he said Section 8. Okay. We have vouchers for Unicorn. Were they...
Some vouchers, yeah, which...
I get them, I don't know if you want to pull them.
All right, these are...Timmy has them. These are more vouchers, hopefully they still cover.
Okay.
Okay.
We just have some from...these are the new ones that we gave out and these are the ones with the stolen damage. And there was just some conflicting information on what was going through, so I think they need a little more review before...
So hold up before we sign.
Yeah.
Okay. They haven't been signed up on any of them, right?
No.
They haven't signed them.
No.
So let's review them.
Set them up for next time, next week.
Okay.
You ready to run?
All right.
And then I see you got Robinhood coming up. There's also gonna be another $50,000 added. Did you see that extra email?
That brings it up to 250.
And then you want to do some kind of commission? We talked about commissions tomorrow. Committee asking for...
Well, yeah, you gotta review your contract.
Yeah, we have the...
Now, is this the entire contract?
Is that...this is the guidelines that you have to agree to for that?
Have you looked this over, Brian?
Yep. Has the mayor had a chance to look it over?
No.
Why not? He's away.
So should we change it to 250,000 on the resolution?
I listen, so if you... When did the email come out?
The mayor emailed me this afternoon.
Oh, all right. All right, so he's seeing it.
Yes, then on your copy, if you're gonna certify the formal copy, it'll make that It is very paperwork...it's very straightforward, but it is paperwork-intensive. And it's very specific as to what their requirements are at the end.
Someone's gonna have to babysit it.
Yep. Yep. No, this is gonna be...this is definitely gonna be an assignment.
Well, that's why I recommend that you get a committee.
Could we bring in outside organizations in the community into this? In other words, is there a review process where we could bring in outside organization, like civic organization leaders or...
Sure. You could, as long as you have to deal with what these requirements are, then supply you with the report. However you administer it internally is not much of a concern. It's just the report at the end has to be in the name of the village.
Oh, okay. I think that would probably be a good way to handle it. We have...we have three major organizations and maybe get one or two of the churches involved in it. That way, we can have a five-member group of the area.
That's fine.
You've got Pata Squash Creek, you've got Osprey Point, you've got the property owners, St. Jude's and...
Eligibility assessment, benefits can all be administered by them. The main issue is the ultimate decision when they...we'll figure out what the...how the best way to...the process is, but ultimately, the process needs to be approved by the board trustees because the buck stops here. And then at the end, the report has to be in your name. You can have community groups, church groups assist you in administering it, but ultimately, this is a village program.
Right. Okay.
They can't disperse any funds, a dollar, until it got through you guys as well because they have the unannounced audit rights, Robinhood Foundation. So you want to make sure before you do it...
Well, we'll have the account so no one can actually cut a check.
Well, there's not gonna be any checks either.
Right, exactly.
It's just gonna be gift cards and those services and kind.
Right, but even if purchase those gift cards, it's gonna have to come through.
Will you not find them or is Robinhood buying them?
They're gonna give you the money and then they're gonna determine...
How to disperse.
If you're rying a stove for someone, if you don't give them the cash, you buy it for them.
Buy it for them or you give them a gift card and they can add to that gift card?
Whatever, but, you know.
That would be the internal part?
Yeah, the problem is it's so easy for people to, you know, say, yes, my house was damaged. You give them the gift card and then they sell it off to someone else. You want to make sure...
That's why you have to determine what your qualifications are gonna be for...
I think that's what the intention of the committee is, to have give some organizations instruction to it.
An oversight. Absolutely. All right, so we want to vote on that now?
Do you want to vote on forming a committee?
I think we have to vote on agreeing that we did.
Yeah, we're gonna take it.
First we want to do is have it accepted because they need to have an email confirmation from the mayor as soon as possible to make sure we're...
Accepting the grant.
Accepting it, correct.
All right, Tim, you want me to read this? I'll show it over to you.
I don't know, sorry. They got it projected. If you want to, it's a few.
Did you skip the...you skipped a resolution.
I did, yeah.
But that's okay.
Yeah, that's all.
We will go back.
We like voting back.
All right. So it's 250,000, I should...
Okay. I'd like to make a resolution accepting the grant from the Robinhood Foundation in the sum of $250,000 for relief of people damaged by Hurricane Sandy. So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Jill, you want to make sure the mayor gets an email, you know, confirm, pass, give him a copy of the resolution?
Now we'll go back to...
Well, do you want to do your committee resolution on the Robinhood so this way we keep them in order or do you want to think about it some more?
No, no. My concern with the grant is most people have got money from FEMA, money from their insurance company. So we have to be really careful that we're helping people who need the most help.
Well, that's why you're selecting a committee, just select them.
I know, but how much...how deep do we dive into their personal...
That's what you're gonna want to find out. I mean, I think it's gonna become apparent pretty fast.
I mean, that's one good thing about having the civics involved, you know, they'll hear on the street, you know, there's the families, you know, that might be in dire need and then from there, we're just, as a whole committee, they'll have to find out if the fact that need is true and how best to give it to them.
Yeah, I think what we'll have to do is we'll have to sit down and go over the parameters.
Yep.
Figure out a way that it'll be fair and equitable for everyone. Then we can sit down and figure out what groups want to be involved, get them involved, give them our parameters because we're ultimately, as you say...
We're responsible.
Going to be responsible for it and then they can pick the people based...
Qualify people, assess what their needs are, then respond, report to you as to whether it's acceptable to you, I think is the best thing. And again, this is predicted to be between $5,000 and $2,000 a household. This is not transformative. This is not government kind of sized funds, you know, $10,000 is the maximum per household, but the estimate is between $5,000 and $2,000. So they are talking about something that was not covered by insurance, maybe a dishwasher, a washing machine, carpeting.
Well, maybe when they do meet...
Whatever it is, it'll be well appreciated, I guess.
One of the board can be there just to watch and listen and this way you have, you know, your ears in there, but you let them do all the work.
Well, we'll have to come up with an application for people to fill out.
Yeah, which I think, I think, Timmy, put one together already.
Who would like to reach out to the groups in the area? Line this all up.
I'll work on it.
Yeah, no, we'll work on it together. We work together on everything.
Hey, we got the new guy coming.
He's running.
Hey!
He's here.
He's here, yeah. Can you walk outside?
We just volunteered you.
Usually, it's the one who's dying who gets paid.
You're fine, go on.
Next resolution is authorizing the deposition of real property located Orchid Drive, identified on the Suffolk County land and tax map as District 0200, Section 980.7, Block 5, Lot 21.
Oh, here we go.
From Rosalie LaViero.
Very good.
Correct. To the village of Mastick Beach.
Yes. By previous resolution last year, Resolution 284 of 2012, they authorized...this is the vacant property that was in the estate. The board authorized the mayor to take the steps necessary to make the tran...perfect the conveyance. It turns out that there were actually unsatisfied tax liens on the property of $1,340.23, so we'd have to satisfy those before we would take it. They are not in a position to do it nor that they want to because they're gonna donate the property to the village.
I think that's a fair trade.
I would like to make a motion.
Make a motion to adopt this resolution.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
All right. We all want to ride along.
And the next one is a resolution setting a fee of $5 for copies of deeds. The property is located within the village. This resolution shall take effect immediately, so moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
All right. Anybody else have anything else to discuss?
I just want to mention that the new website is up. We're still working on it, but it's much more attractive. So very happy with it. I have a question. How come Riviera is paved on two sides and then no paving? What was the reason for that? Why do we not have a complete paved Riviera? Just curious.
You got a student who's got that?
Yes, no, we can't, nothing for Riviera. Sorry.
Concoises of Riviera that are paved were done illegally.
By?
The Brookhaven Highway Department. It was done as a gesture to civic groups and things like that. They later were sanctioned by the DEC for having done it. That's why where it ends and when they went in and did that, was that tube project they did down there? What do they call that thing? Bio-tube or something?
Oh, the culverts?
No, the...what is that thing?
Biologs.
Biologs. When they did the biologs and everything, they did that to try and then say, okay, we're extending the shoreline. We now want to pay Riviera, DEC told me to get it.
Driving around looking at these properties, it's impossible to drive on a good portion of that road. So we need to...
Well, to my life. What you love.
Oh, as long as you've got food in the house and you can look out at the water, it's beautiful.
Look out at the water?
Wade through the water. I'm just curious.
There's no place he cannot look out at the water.
On the new website, you got the...you're gonna have the connection... On the, the new website, you got the, you're going to have the connection to Tom's.
It's on there.
It's on.
This is up and running already.
We couldn't get it today.
Yeah, we couldn't get it up.
Couldn't get it up?
We couldn't.
All right, I'll check, I'll check with Jesse.
I, I found an answer.
You did find it later on, okay.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's no longer in the center of the page, it's on the left. Yeah, but, but we can tweak it, but it's much more attractive than. We're going to put out a request for people, we've got a lot of photographers in the community, anybody who has pretty pictures of the area, we'd like to, you know, we'd like to be a little more inviting, a little more tourist inviting. So some of the nicer pictures of the community would be nice. People can submit them and we'll put them up on the website.
The, Joe Vega was down.